The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
All right, welcome everybody to Weyburn City Council for Monday, October 27th, our last meeting of the month, obviously, a pretty full agenda, particularly focused on the 2026 municipal budget. So we are, we have got a long agenda ahead of us, so I won't waste any time. I will note that Councillor Sidloski is absent tonight. Other than that, we are all here. First order of business, though, if I could get a motion to approve the minutes from the October 14th meetings.
Your Worship, I make the motion that the minutes of the regular council meeting and the strategic planning and priorities meeting held October 14th, 2025 be approved.
Thank you.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. Any questions or commentary, edits to those minutes? Hearing none, then I'll call the question. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Next up, additions to the agenda. First look to administration.
Yeah, thanks your worship. There's no additions from administration tonight.
There is one change to the agenda. We are going to move item 7D, which is the preliminary budget. We're going to move that out of motions and into new business. It will become 10E. And if I could get a motion to approve now the agenda as amended.
I would make that motion, your worship.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you. Any questions or commentary on that? Hearing none? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, public hearings and notices are none tonight. No delegations, proclamations, or petitions. Agenda item five, reports of standing committees. Any councillors want to give any reports on any committees that they're involved with or any events over the last few weeks? Administration? None? We'll move, everybody's eager to get the budget, I can tell. All right. Next up is our consent agenda. So cash activity report for September, public works for September, water treatment plant for September, and the fire chiefs' report for August and September. If I could get a motion to get that on the floor, please.
Your worship, I move that the items on the consent agenda be accepted.
Thank you. And a seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
All right. Anything on the consent agenda that anybody wants to pull off or dive into or have a conversation about? Nope. Hearing none? Call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. As always, I'll note, those items are on the city's website. You can have a look at them if you, if you'd like. Okay, look at us, we're just burning through the whole agenda. We are on to number seven. This is motions. So first up, municipal revenue sharing. This is always a good news item. I would look to the city manager, please.
Yeah, thanks your worship. So the government Saskatchewan provides funding to local municipalities to support delivery of community services through the municipal revenue sharing program. The annual program gives municipalities amount based on three quarters of one point of provincial sales tax revenue collected for the two years earlier. So just in this last budget year in 2025, the city of Weyburn received just over $2.7 million. All Saskatchewan municipalities are eligible for municipal revenue sharing program. To receive the grant, municipality is required to submit the following: submission of the annual financial statements to the ministry, submission of public reporting on municipal law works to the ministry, if applicable, which ours is applicable, ensure education property taxes are in good standing with respect to the EPT reporting and remnants, adoption of the council procedures bylaw, adoption of employee's code of conduct, and filing and annually updating the public disclosure statements for all members of council as required. All municipalities are required to complete the declaration of eligibility and have it submitted to the Ministry of Government Relations by January 31st of each year. Complete declaration requires resolution of council confirming that municipality meets all eligibility requirements. So I am recommending to council that council provide the province with the required resolution confirming that the city of Weyburn meets all eligibility requirements for the municipal revenue sharing program.
Thank you, city manager. Can I get a motion to get this on the floor?
Your worship, I would move that city council provide the province with the required resolution confirming that the city of Weyburn meets all eligibility requirements for the municipal revenue sharing program.
Thank you. I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you very much. All right. Questions, commentary on this one?
Yep. Not that I questioned it for a second, but just in the interest of making sure the question was asked, we are completely confident we do meet all of these, correct?
Yeah, we sure do. That's no worries from us, at all from municipality.
That's a good question. Yep.
Councillor Bedore?
Just wondering, as your new restrictions with these funds, if granted, they're like ready to just go into operations and we can spend them as we?
Yeah, so there is no restrictions for the, for the grant. It's provide municipalities to spend the way they want to spend the money. So what we would do is we put into our general revenue, helps keep our taxes down, and actually helps us do a little bit more in project-based. So we are quite fortunate to see this funding come through. We will hear what the 2026 rate is that we'll be receiving when the provincial budget comes out as well.
Thanks. Any other questions? Nope. Okay, then I guess we'll call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, this is six-month notice to acquire title. We'd look to the Director of Finance for this one, please.
Thank you. As per section 23 of the Tax Enforcement Act, a six-month notice will be sent out to the following properties. The six-month notice will be served to all persons who appear or have interest on the title of the property. This notice is served to give all the opportunity to redeem the land before the city authorizes proceedings to request title of the property from the municipal, the provincial mediation board. After a period of six months, the city will request, will make a request from PMB for consent of title. So the properties are all listed. There's 66 properties in total, and the total value of property, of taxes owing are $227,138. And our recommendation is that council authorize the staff to serve the six-month notice in accordance with the Tax Enforcement Act for all properties with outstanding tax arrears.
Thank you very much. Okay, can we get a motion for this, please?
Your worship, we'll move that the city assessor be authorized to continue under the Tax Enforcement Act to serve the six-month notice to the properties listed in the report.
Thank you. I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you. All right, questions for the Director of Finance? Councillor Higgs?
Is this sort of average for the year, or is it higher than normal? It seems a little bit higher to me.
Yeah, this is actually higher than normal. Last year it was, we had 20 properties and it was just under $52,000. 2023 was 68 properties and $164,000.
Thank you. Councillor Morissette?
Thank you, worship. Director Missault, once owners receive this, do the majority of them usually pay? Or is it another, hey, guess what, you still owe us money kind of notice that goes out?
Uh, no, quite a few of them will pay. Yep. They're aware and, yeah, people don't want to be in tax arrears usually, so they usually pay up or make arrangements to make payment anyway.
Yes. That's okay. And I noticed there are three that are significantly higher than the rest. Are they business properties or would they be?
I can't comment on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Councillor Corrigan?
I would follow up with that one because I had the same question, but I was wondering, are those carryovers from other years then? Or are some of these carryovers, or are these just for this last fiscal year?
Um, no, it's just for, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, this is very standard procedure, it seems like, and fortunately got a little bit bigger this year, but this is what we have to do. No further questions? And I will call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, we are on now to oh, 7C. This is city refuse pickup options, so we will put this to the Director of Engineering.
Thank you, your worship. The city's current refuse collection model consists of a fixed weekly collection schedule for eight months of the year, from April to November, and a bi-weekly collection schedule for four months of the year from December to March, with an extra week of collection between Christmas and New Year's. The collection model has been in place since 2018, the same timeframe that the city introduced the curbside recycling program. The city currently offers residents an opportunity to rent a second refuse bin for a monthly fee of $10.50 a month. There is a limit to one additional refuse bin per household, and approval is based on a minimum 12-month commitment. Residents with a home-based business are not eligible for an additional cart. Currently, there are only 19 households that are paying for a second bin. Council directed administration to review the current refuse collection model and present options for increased collection models for further discussion and consideration. So the first collection model, option one, that was reviewed is, or that is available, fixed weekly refuse collection for 12 months. So this option would result in an increase of approximately $8,000 a year to operating expenditures, which includes fuel and truck maintenance for the additional weeks of refuse collection, as well as an estimated cost related to snow removal during, the snow removal support during the four winter months that otherwise would be done by the refuse truck operator on the non-collection weeks. Since option one is associated with an overall increase in operating expenditures, it would be recommended to introduce a cost recovery fee in the form of a rate increase to the existing environmental fees. This would require an amendment to Schedule A of the Refuse Bylaw, which would be done during the scheduled fee review in 2026. Collection model, option two, the current model with bi-weekly collection reduced to three months from January to March. This option would not result in a significant increase to operating expenditures because it is only an additional two weeks of collection for the month of December. The refuse bins are often at capacity during the month of December, resulting with extra trips to the landfill to empty during the current collection model. It would be beneficial to promote the application for a second refuse cart with this option for the households that are generating waste volumes that exceed their bin capacity during the bi-weekly collection months. Council options. Option one, that council approve a change to fixed weekly refuse collection year-round and implement a corresponding fee increase during the 2026 scheduled fee review. Option two, that council approves a modification to the current collection model, reducing bi-weekly collection to the months of January through March. Administration's recommending option two as it does not require a cost recovery fee increase, and it supports the city's environmental initiatives with the recent partnership with the province-wide recycling program, SASC Recycles.
Thank you, Director Cognit. So let's get a motion on the floor for this one.
Your worship, as a point of order, I'm going to make the motion for option one because it seems to me if we decide we want to go with option two instead, it's much easier to amend a motion to a less impactful motion than to go the other direction and not have to remake the motion, so. I move that council approve a change to the fixed weekly refuse collection year-round and implement a corresponding fee increase in the 2026 schedule review.
Thank you. And a seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thanks, Councillor Morissette. All right, let's open this up for discussion. Right now, we are debating option one. That is the motion that was made. Yes? Go ahead, Councillor.
If I may, I am rather in favor of option one primarily because all of the residents I've talked to have requested it all year-round and not for a small percentage. One of the complaints that I have heard again and again about going to bi-weekly in the wintertime isn't so much that it happens as it is that they don't know when it happens and when it doesn't. Now, I realize that's published, that's all available on the website and on the forums everyone gets, but it seems to me that not going year-round, even with the small additional fee, is a half measure. And my position on this is that what the residents are asking for is not a half measure, but a full measure, and one that is very simple and easy to understand. Thank you.
Councillor Corrigan?
Thank you, worship. I am opposed to the motion. I am not looking to increase fees whatsoever. We are looking at ways to balance our budget and, and spend money in other areas. I believe that the, by moving to only three months as opposed to four months of, of bi-weekly collection is a satisfactory solution. It seems that most of the issues arise through the, through December, during the holiday months when there's more, people tend to have more garbage in their homes. And even by moving the bi-weekly from the second week in January to the first, I think it would cover all that, those issues as far as people having expanded usage and more refuse over the holiday period. I think we have a solution for those families that do have more refuse throughout the entire year, and that's a second bin. So I would speak against the motion and would move to option two.
Thank you. Councillor Higgs?
I too, I'm against motion one, or option one, rather. And not only is it the $8,000 initial cost, there's an offsetting cost there too that that employee is used for other services. And although that's a bit of a, who knows, but depending on what the weather is or, or you know, if he's using quite often a snow truck, those kinds of things, that's some contractor savings in there for us as well, using that same employee.
Thank you. Councillor Bedore?
I am also opposed of option one. I did a little straw poll myself with some residents, and I think the biggest issue, and I think the data supports this as well, that, that Christmas time up into the first week of January, and then the data supports the, the landfill, the, the volume goes down January, February, March to begin with. So it's a good, a good nudge forward, and if we, we can revisit this in 2030 maybe.
Councillor Morissette, we might as well complete the loop.
Save the best for last. Actually, I have a question for Director Cognit. With the number of people who actually take advantage of having that second bin per year, does your driver find it difficult to manage more than one or two bins on some of those more cluttered streets where they don't have off-street parking?
Currently, there's only 19 residents that are, that have a second bin, so no, it doesn't affect operations at all at this time. So, yeah. Thank you.
If there's nothing else?
I would, go ahead, you don't have to say. Okay. I would move that we amend the motion to approve option two and continue with weekly pickup and go to bi-weekly in the months of January, February, and March, with bi-weekly commencing in the first week of January.
Very good. Somebody to second the amendment?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you. So any commentary on the amendment? Because that's what we're going to be voting on. Uh-oh, Tina's got it. Sorry, Tina.
Councillor Jenke made the motion, so he has to make the amendment to the motion.
Is that true? I didn't know that. Learned something today. Then I will move that we amend the motion to reduce bi-weekly collection to the months of January through March, not consider a fee increase and not make any changes to the rest of the year.
Thank you, Councillor Jenke. Councillor Corrigan, would you like to second that amendment?
I would be happy to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, by the way, city clerk, for that clarity. So conversation right now is on the amendment only. Anything else to discuss on that? Hearing nothing, we will vote on the amendment. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Now we're going to vote on the motion itself.
Will you call opposed so I can put my hand up?
Oh, yes, sorry. Any opposed? We're overdue for one. Is what's the actual, yes. Okay, so we've, we've passed the amendment, now we need to pass the motion. So does he have to make the motion, or anybody can make the motion now? The motion's made, we're done. Okay, right. Any further commentary then?
Only that if we get no snow this year and the garbage truck driver's not busy, Councillor Higgs will never, ever hear the end of it from me.
Councillor Corrigan?
Just clarification, I mean, I know that the, the schedule right now, and, sorry, Director Cognit could probably answer this, is that bi-weekly is, is scheduled to begin in the second week of January. Are we moving that to the first week in January then? Or will the, I mean, I know you didn't mention that, Councillor Jenke, would you, within your motion, but I just want clarification on that because I think that, that solves a lot of our issue over the holiday season.
Just to jump in, he did mention starting January.
The bi-weekly, yes. Just, just wondering about the actual start week of it as opposed, because the one calendar that I saw, it started in the second week as opposed to the first week of January.
So in order to, to have the full month of December for weekly pickup, the last week of December is going to be in 2026, December 28th to January 2nd? So then to move to bi-weekly in January, the first bi-weekly pickup would be January 12th to 16th? So, I mean, sorry, the first will be a stat, but I mean, the pickup, there still will be pickup on January 2nd on the Friday. Yeah, so it would change the schedule, but I, we can, we can look at it and definitely consider it. Like, it's just those three months that would be switched around for the first.
Yeah, because there's a stat in that first week of, of January.
Yeah.
Which the first would fall on the Thursday.
Yeah, so currently, we're proposing the, the second and fourth weeks being the pickup weeks from January to March, so then if we did, if we switch it the first week, it would be the first and third weeks. So.
Correct.
Then, yeah. We can probably do it.
Clears mud?
Yes.
Okay. More comfortable? Did we vote on this already? I'm lost in this one. Yeah, good, thanks. Okay, we have not. Okay, good. So the quest, call the question to move to option two. All in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. All right, so we will go on now. There's no introduction of bylaws. Excuse me, no unfinished business. Next up is second and third reading of the Safe Public Spaces Bylaw. We would look to the city clerk for this one. Thank you.
At its September 16th, 2025 meeting, the Weyburn Police Commission received a formal request from Police Chief Vandecipe to recognize the Safe Public Spaces Act, which is also known as the Street Weapons Act. The commission passed a motion requesting Weyburn City Council to enact a bylaw opting into the act, thereby making it applicable within the city of Weyburn. On October 14th, council gave first reading to this bylaw. The purpose of the proposed bylaw is to allow the city to opt into new rules set out by the government of Saskatchewan in the Safe Public Spaces or Street Weapons Act that promotes safety in public urban spaces by regulating the possession, transportation, and storage of items that may be used as street weapons such as large knives, machetes, or bear spray, as well as dangerous drugs, drugs such as methamphetamine and fentanyl. These rules will apply in municipalities and First Nations that choose to opt into the new act. The act prohibits persons from possessing items that could be used as street weapons in public spaces, defacing or altering those items or possessing such an item that has been defaced or altered. Persons in breach of these rules can be charged with a provincial offense and subject to a fine of not more than $5,000, imprisonment for up to one year, or both a fine and imprisonment. The act further provides police enhanced powers to seize these items from people in public spaces where there's a threat to public safety regardless of whether a charge is late. I recommend that council give second and third reading to adopt bylaw 2025-3506, short name the Safe Public Spaces Bylaw, as recommended by the Weyburn Board of Police Commissioners to allow enforcement under the Safe Public Spaces Act.
Thank you very much. All right, let's get that motion.
Your worship, I'll make the motion that council give second reading to bylaw 2025-3506, short name the Safe Public Spaces Bylaw, as recommended by the Weyburn Board of Police Commissioners to the, allow the enforcement under the Safe Public Spaces Act.
Thank you.
I would second that motion, your worship.
Okay, thank you. So any questions since last time on this? Councillor Bedore?
Just one question, if, if passed tonight, when does this actually take effect?
As soon as it passes.
As soon as it passes, okay. I would note that Chief Vandecipe is, is here tonight if there's questions directly, or chief, if you want, is there anything you want to say? Deputy Chief St. John spoke last time, and if there's anything you want to add to the commentary? Not trying to put you on the spot, but.
Oh, your worship, on the bill, there is any further questions, but if anything was answered last week, and yes, it'll take effect immediately as soon as it passes.
Thanks. Okay. Any other questions for administration or for the chief? Okay, hearing none? We'll call the question. All in favor? Ms. Carey, thank you. Third reading?
Your worship, I'd move that council gives third reading and passes bylaw 2025-3506, short name the public, Safe Public Spaces Bylaw, as recommended by the Weyburn Police Commission, sorry, to allow the enforcement under the Safe Public Spaces Act.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Okay, I'll ask again, is there any questions or commentary? Nope. Hearing none? Then we'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, that's carried. Good work, thank you very much. I'm excited for that. Okay, let's go on then to new business. First up is a sign application, and that we will look to our planning and development coordinator, please.
So an application for the placement of two billboards along Highway 39 were received from a Pricesters Water Shield Association and approved at the September 22nd, 2025 open council meeting. They are now requesting a change in location of one of the signs to be placed along Highway 13 instead. The sign features remains the same as a standard non-LED single-sided sign. All height, size, and setback standards are met, and with no negative off-site impacts The submitted application from a Pricesters Water Shield Association is for the placement of a standard non-LED billboard along Highway 13. The sign will be 2.4 meters, about eight feet high, and 3.6 meters, 12 feet ha, 12 feet in width, and has a surface area of 8.9 square meters or 96 square feet. Zoning bylaw 2020-3412 outlined that billboards on city-controlled properties require approval from city council prior to the issuance of a sign permit. They must have a maximum height of 3.048 meters, which is 10 feet, and a length of 6.096 meters, which is 20 feet, with a maximum surface area of 18.58 square meters or 200 square feet per face. The intended billboard falls below the minimum zoning requirements for the size. So option one, council approves the application 2025.007 for the placement of a billboard along Highway 13 without further conditions. Option two, council approves the application 2025.007 for the placement of a billboard along Highway 13 with the following conditions: the minimum setback from the highway center line is 22 meters or 72 feet; the minimum distance between signs is 92 meters or 300 feet; no portion of the billboard shall be located within 23 meters or 75.4 feet of an intersection of streets as determined by the developer, development officer; and there is to be no direct illumination that impedes regular traffic or interferes with traffic signals. Option three, council directs the development officer to refuse the billboard application 2025.007 for the following reasons: the officer making the motion for refusal should provide reasons for the permits refusal in their motion. Staff recommendations, staff are recommending option two, as although the billboard will be constructed on city-controlled property, it will be adhering to the height restrictions. There are additional clearance requirements according to the zoning bylaw that the applicant must follow.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
Your worship, I make the motion that council approve option number two with the conditions listed in the report, as well as the additional clearance requirements listed in zoning bylaw 2020-3412.
Thank you. And a seconder?
I would second that motion.
Thanks, Councillor Jenke. All right, questions or comments for Coordinator Malcolm on this one? Councillor Bedore?
I just have one general question. If everything fits within a bylaw, why does it have to come to open council?
Because it is on city property, and anything placed on city property does have to come to council for approval.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so we'll call the question. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Coordinator Malcolm, you're up.
All right, so another sign application. So an application from Mohammed Khan of Adguys for the placement of two portable signs on land south of Highway 39 coming from Estevan was received, presented to the 2020, September 22nd, 2025, open council meeting and approved. The signs will be the standard non-LED single-sided portable sign or portable billboard. Adguys are now requesting a change in location for their portable signs still along Highway 39. Um, Adguys are now requesting a change in location for their portable signs still along Highway thirty nine. The submitted application from Mohammed Khan is for the placement of two, uh, standard LED, non LED portable signs on city property along Highway thirty nine, this time in separate locations for the promotion of a well drilling and exploration company. Uh, the sign will be two point four meter wide and one point two meter long and have a surface area of two point eight eight square meters. Uh, the proposed signs will comply with the regulations outlined in the city of Weyburn zoning bylaw twenty twenty dash three four one two, including placement, size, and duration requirements. Uh, the sign will be positioned to ensure visibility without obstructing pedestrian or vehicle traffic, and it will be maintained in good condition for the duration of the permit. Um, upon exp- expiration of the permit, the sign will be promptly removed and the site restored to its original condition. So now the, um, new locations are near Walmart and um, near, or welcome to Weyburn sign coming in from Estevan. So, option one, council approves the application twenty twenty five dot zero one six for the placement of two portable signs on lands along Highway thirty nine without further conditions. Option two, council approves the application twenty twenty five dot zero one six for the placement of two portable signs along Highway thirty nine, uh, subject to the following conditions. Uh, placement must maintain a minimum setback of ten meters from the edge of the highway right of way. Uh, signs must be freestanding, portable, and professionally constructed or, and maintained. Uh, the signs may only be displayed for the period authorized by the permit. Uh, the signs must be removed immediately upon expiration of the permit or at the request of the city. Uh, the signs must only advertise the approved business identified in the application, and the signs must have affixed the contact information, including the owner's name and phone number, uh, to a visible location on the sign. Option three, council directs the development officer to refuse the application twenty twenty five dot zero one six for the following reasons. The officer making the motion for refusal shall provide reasons for the permit's refusal in their motion. So staff are recommending option two, as it supports city's goal, ensuring orderly development while maintaining public safety and visual harmony.
Thank you. Um, a motion, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'll make the motion that council approve option number two with the conditions listed in the report.
Okay, a second, or?
I will second that motion, your worship.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, Counselor Jenke. Alright, there should, there shall be discussion, I believe, on this one. Who wants to start? Counselor Hanks?
So, with a little bit of research and some conversations with Shirley, the, the people who are actually building and constructing the physical sign in the city of Weyburn are not required to have a business license under the current bylaw.
Correct, they are not required to have a business license.
Okay, and for that reason, I'll be voting against that.
Anybody else got questions? Counselor Jenke?
Apologies for kind of ambushing you with this question, Shirley, but is that common that we have people without a business license in town putting signs up?
Um, yes, and just to further explain, um, back in two thousand nineteen, uh, or then city clerk, um, brought the business license bylaw to council for review. Uh, uh, and, um, a decision was that was to remove signs, billboards, and posters from that. So, because the permit fees would include the business license fees, pretty much. Yeah.
Thanks for that answer. Counselor Hanks?
So, a current business in town that might produce signs still has to have a business license though, correct?
Correct, because they have a storefront.
Okay, fair. Any other commentary on this? If I may, I would have only one question that, um, the change to move to that parcel along thirty nine towards the Walmart, that land had, does have some restrictions on it. This wouldn't be in violation of any of those covenants whatsoever?
No, so the parcel that does have the restriction is further south of where the, the signs will be located.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Alright, everybody comfortable? Then we'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? One. Thank you. Um, okay, we will go back to the Director of Engineering. We have got a rural water hookup.
Thank you, your worship. Okay, the Weyburn Utility Board has requested approval to hook up one new residential water service. The owner confirmed satisfactory sewage disposal arrangements. Based on estimated residential demands, we can handle the additional requirement on our water system. The ten thousand dollar connection fee for rural residential water connections will apply. It is recommended the following request be approved for residential water service to Coal Misco at southeast twenty six, eight of fourteen, west of the second.
Thank you. Need a motion?
Worship, I'll move that the request from Coal Misco at southeast twenty six, eight fourteen, west of the second be approved for a wet residential water service hookup.
Thank you. And a second, or?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thanks. Any questions on this or seeking clarity? Pretty simple. Very good. Alright, we'll call the question. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Director Cugnan, if you want to continue, we have one more.
Okay, we have a second one. The Weyburn Utility Board has requested approval to hook up one new commercial water service. The owner confirmed there will be no sewage disposal arrangements required, as the water will be used for aerial spray application, uh, seasonal aerial spray application, I should say. Based on estimated demands, we can handle the additional requirement on our water system. The twenty five thousand dollar connection fee for rural commercial waters connections will apply. It is recommended the following request be approved for commercial water service for Far Air Inc. at the Weyburn Airport Hangar number twenty four.
Thank you. A motion, please.
Your worship, I would move that the request from Far Air Incorporated, Weyburn Airport Hangar number twenty four, be approved for commercial water service.
Thank you. Second, or?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thanks, Counselor Hanks. Okay, questions on this one? Counselor Hanks?
When the application is put forward, do they put a estimated volume on a commercial property?
Uh, no, it's not on the application, but dur- during the approval process or review process, sorry, um, we do look into that. So, we, this one, there will be no additional volume, uh, requested, as they're currently filling from our distribution sys- system from the fill station. So it'll be just a moving from one fill location to another. And actually, it'll, um, it'll relieve some of the lineups and, and pressure at our filling station as their trucks usually take, uh, one and a half to two hours to fill, causing kind of a congested area there. So, it'll be good.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification, Ed, same. Anything else? Alright, hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, what is left is item ten E. This is the preliminary budget. So, what, what'll happen here? First off, I want to just note that we have got a moratorium on the communication of baseball scores right now. So, for those watching this years down the road, this is game three of the twenty twenty five World, Counselor Corrigan. Point of order. Uh, so, we, we are certainly hopeful that the Blue Jays are having the game that we want them to have. But, uh, if, to the extent that you're able, don't spoil the police chief's evening. I would say that's where I'm at. Okay, so we'll turn it over, I guess. Uh, Director Finance gonna quarterback this one? Thank you very much.
Alright, so the city of Weyburn's preliminary budget, um, we're focusing on the vision, uh, community for all. Our mission continues to be to grow through opportunity. So the municipal budget serves as an outline for how the money that comes into the city of Weyburn should be spent to maintain and improve the city. Our strategic plan is council's strategic direction and priorities established. That they establish the guidelines for the initial steps in preparing the annual operating and capital budgets. Um, we're gonna have some public engagement. An open house will be held on November fourth and sixth to allow the public the opportunity to ask questions and discuss with council the proposed preliminary budget. So we've continued to, um, we have a balanced approach, um, that we've had in prior years. So we want to maintain tax policies to keep the city of Weyburn competitive, balance rate payers' interest with continued growth, balance departments' request to continue with a high level of service and programs, address maintenance and replacement of major capital, set up shortened, long term plans, and manage the increase in supply and capital costs. So the city's budget, um, has three primary, um, funds. We have the general operating fund, which has an operating budget and a capital budget. And these consist of the admin, finance, police, and fire services, leisure services, parks, facilities, planning and development, engineering, public works, the fleet services, and the infrastructure revitalization program. Our utility and landfill budgets, they operate separately, and they primarily are our water and sewer and our water treatment plant and our landfill. So the general operations of the city of Weyburn are funded through tax revenue and grants, and the utility and landfill functions are funded by user fees that are collected, so that's our utility bills, um, our landfill fees, and through capital grants. So this year, the city of Weyburn's, um, funding is proposed to be property taxes and grants and loos of four point, just under four point five million, grant funding of just under six million, fees and charges on services of one point eight million, investment income and other of one point one four five million, and reserve funding of five hundred and thirty two thousand for a total of twenty three million nine hundred and sixty two thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars. Our utility funds, um, they're proposed to be funded through fees and charges of just under seven point five million, grant funding of two hundred and forty thousand, reserve funding of a hundred and ninety thousand, for a total of seven million nine hundred and twenty two thousand five hundred. And our capital funds, um, we're proposing to have reserve and internal loan funding of just over a million, transfers from operating of one point three million, and external financing of three point two million. So that's a total of five million six hundred and four thousand and nine hundred and fifty dollars. So our total operating budget is thirty seven million four hundred and eighty nine thousand seven twenty five. So we have it broken down to where our tax dollars are spent. This ju- is just our operating fund. So admin and finance is thirteen point four percent, police services is twenty two point seven six, fire is seven point two five, planning and development, one point three five, leisure, seven point two eight, parks, five point six one, engineering, two point six eight, public works, twelve point nine one, fleet services, six point one one, um, infrastructure revitalization, four point five three, and facilities at sixteen point one two percent. So this year, we have a proposed increase in taxes of six point five percent. It's seven hundred and seventy five thousand seven hundred and ninety five dollars. So this revenue will be distributed, um, between the operating fund and public works. They have an increase in their expenditures of four hundred and fifty one thousand. Um, the infrastructure revitalization program of three hundred and seventy thousand, police of just under two hundred and fifty thousand, fire just over two hundred thousand, property tax fund of a hundred and ninety two thousand, leisure, one seventy five, fleet, seventy seven thousand, admin and finance, forty seven thousand, and parks, planning, engineering, and facilities actually all had a decrease in their expenditures. So, their decrease would be attributed to the other departments' increases. So that makes a total of seven hundred and seventy five thousand, uh, seven hundred and ninety five dollars. So the twenty twenty six operating and capital, so our operating budget is twenty three million six hundred and eleven thousand. Um, our capital budget is two million one hundred and ninety four thousand, so total budget of twenty five million eight hundred and six, at seven twenty five. So this includes transfers from reserves of five hundred and sixty six thousand, um, operating funded by reserves of five hundred and thirty two thousand, and capital funded by reserves of five hundred and eighty five. So our total operating expenditures are twenty five million eight hundred and six thousand seven hundred and twenty five. This is just within the operating of our general funds. So the general operating fund, um, we show the, the revenue that we have budgeted to come in of twenty four million one hundred and eighty four thousand seven seventy five, and our expenses by each department, um, they total twenty three million six hundred and eleven eight twenty five. So before capital, uh, surplus of seven hu- or five hundred and seventy two thousand nine fifty. Um, our capital expenditures within operating, they total two million eighty four thousand nine hundred. So that results in a deficit of one million five hundred and eleven thousand nine fifty. So to fund this deficit, we have some internal transfers of just under four hundred thousand, transfers from reserves of five hundred and thirty two. That's for our operating. Those are primarily, um, carryover projects. Um, transfers from reserves for our capital of three hundred and sixty thousand, some internal loan advances of two hundred and twenty five to have total financing of one point five million to come to a zero budget. So within our general fund, our capital, um, that we've budgeted for, so within fire, we have, uh, wildland truck for two hundred thousand, the ladder truck down payment for a hundred and twenty five, parks, um, they've carried over their Young Fellows Park Phase One for two hundred thousand, and they have some cemetery runners for twenty five thousand. Engineering is looking at some airport fog and crack ceiling for two hundred and fifty five thousand nine hundred. Um, public works is looking at some asphalt work for seven hundred and fifty, um, an electric security gate for thirty thousand, bulk fuel tanks for thirty thousand, the storm sewer relining for sixty thousand. Um, Highway thirty nine culvert replacement for two eighty two, and the storm water system remodeling for fifty thousand. And within fleet, we have a one ton truck with a flat deck that we're budgeted for a hundred and fifty five thousand and a rear deck more for parks for thirty two thousand. So that's our, um, capital at two million one hundred and ninety four thousand nine hundred. So within our utility and landfill, um, we have an operating budget of six point four million within the utility and water treatment plant, and the landfill is one point six six eight million. And we have capital budgeted for four man six hundred and twenty five thousand. So our total expenditures are budgeted to be twelve man six hundred and ninety three thousand. So this includes transfers from reserves for one point six million, operating funded by reserves is two hundred and forty thousand, capital funded by reserves of seven hundred and twenty eight thousand, and we are budgeting for an external loan for capital of three point two million. So the breakdown here for the utility and landfill, um, total revenues are seven point eight million. The expenditures within the utility, water treatment plant, and landfill are just over eight million. That leaves us with a deficit before capital of two hundred and forty thousand. We have budgeted for four point six two five million in, um, in capital. So, our internal transfers from operating for capital are just under seven hundred thousand. We have transfers from reserves for operating. This is primarily our carryover projects of two hundred and forty thousand, some internal loan advances of seven hundred and twenty eight thousand, and our external loan for three point two. And that brings us to total financing of four point eight six five million and our zero budget on the utility and landfill. Um, so our capital within utility is two water main replacements for five hundred and fifty thousand, the lift station, six upgrades for two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, our water treatment plant upgrades for six hundred thousand, and our landfill, our phase one engineered cell for three point two million, and leveling our, um, scale shock for twenty five thousand. And so our total landfill capital is four million six hundred and twenty five thousand. And we'll go to each department now.
Okay, so, uh, thank you for that, Laura. A good insight. So what we'll do now is we will go through each of the s- six department heads that are here, uh, and they will present. So, city manager, do you wanna, you wanna quarterback from there?
I'll start from there, your worship. Yeah, uh, and thank you, uh, Director of Finance, for going through all of the deep numbers. Um, so what'll happen is, is they'll, each one of the departments will talk more about each one of their projects. Um, Laura did identify a lot of those projects, uh, but they'll be more in depth and, and open to questions that are there. Uh, so I'll start with administration tonight. So administration department includes, uh, city administration, uh, council, um, our HR and corporate services department, uh, finance, uh, and also includes IT within that, um, as well. Uh, so I'll go through some two thousand twenty five highlights. Um, so one is the funding, uh, that we provide towards the Weyburn Humane Society for animal control and facility operations. Uh, the funding that is provided to the Weyburn Regional Economic Development. Uh, the funding that is provided to the Wayburn Regional Economic Development. The Wayburn Builds Program, the commercial incentive program for residential and business incentives. And then council chamber update, which has, has occurred. So some initiatives for two thousand twenty-six is one continued funding for the Wayburn Humane Society. So that funds thirty-seven thousand five hundred. So one that includes animal control, which is thirty-one thousand five hundred. We provide them a operation ground of forty-five hundred. And then we give them, provide them fifteen hundred dollars for veterinary services as well. The second is continued funding for Wayburn Regional Economic Development. The city of Wayburn will be providing a hundred and twenty thousand dollars within our budget towards RED and their initiatives. That is towards the hiring of a full-time economic development officer, which will look at, you know, business attraction, retention, all those things within our community. And that's working closely with our appointed board, which is the Wayburn Regional Economic Development Board. Next thing that we have on, on the request is we have received an operation funding request from Wayburn Theater Community Service Cooperative. So they have provided a request to city council for sixty thousand dollars to provide operation funding towards the theater when it is operational. Uh, and, and that is a request they provide directly to council to look for a multi-year commitment towards that. Also, we have website development. So our website has shown some, some need for improvements for customer service, awareness to the public. So we've included thirty thousand dollars for a full website redevelopment of what we currently have. Uh, and last is a request for additional staffing. Uh, so we are requesting a HR, or sorry, human resources coordinator position. So right now with continue, you know, want to support our staff and provide great customer service towards the public and to support our staff that we have here, we have a need for more staff within the HR department. Right now, the amount of things that are coming through to our HR and corporate services director, there's, there's things that we need support on within that department. So we have included that inside of, of the request this year. So we're looking at department operational costs. Actual costs in two thousand twenty-four were just a little over two point six million. Operation costs in two thousand twenty-five were lower, two point eight million. And we're requesting three point one in the two thousand twenty-six budget. Is there any questions?
Thank you, City Manager. Questions on this item? Counselor Bedore?
Just, just one question around the Humane Society. With their new building being built, is there any change to that funding formula or is it exactly the same?
It's the exact same formula right now. We've had, received no requests to have additional funding for that. The city has a current agreement with them for the land they are building on. It's a one-dollar lease for that property. So that's additional stuff that council provided two years ago to help them secure that land and start to develop on that land.
Thank you. Any other questions? The city manager on this one? Okay, hearing none, we will move on, I think, to the police chief.
Yeah, I'll call forward our police chief, Brandon Vanasite, to talk about police service.
Your Worship counselors. Highlights for two thousand twenty-five, it was early in the year when the police commission and the Wayburn Police Association came together very respectfully and hammered out a deal for two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-six. We had quite a few vacancies here, twenty-four, twenty-five, so we got four new hires, very successful that way. One eighteen-year member that we brought back home, I guess, from Madison Hat. One-year member that was with Sask Highways, and then two new recruits, one in training, one that was just out and he's on field training right now. We've upgraded our facilities a, a little bit, the biggest part being the roof. That's still a work in project, early in progress, but it should be coming to completion here fairly soon. We got new digital entries in our doors. And we've had some carpet and paint, some cosmetics internally in the office, so things are looking good. A couple of the big service agreements that we signed, one was with Forest Green and one with ISN, Investigational Solutions Network, which we do criminal records checks for both of those nationally. And then Safe Neighborhood Camera Registry also falls under the umbrella of Forest Green. So that's where people can register cameras and help basically with law enforcement, keeping our community safe. Our operationally, the equipment, our new Taser sevens just arrived, officers are just being trained on them. We have a forty-millimeter less lethal launcher. Biometric monitoring is about to go into our cells, everything's in place, the wirings are coming up. So we're hoping within a week or two, we have that up and going. And we also got a drone this year, early in the year, and it has thermal imaging as well as extended range. You can see our budget increased costs from whatever, five point one two nine to five point three seven three. Initiatives for two thousand twenty-six, actually, we took a fair bit off the board in two thousand twenty-five. A lot of those things came up out of the blue and we had the opportunity, so we jumped on it. But two thousand twenty-six initiatives, NG nine-eleven remains there. It'll likely be through the year, could be as early as quarter one, quarter two is more likely. That's been, I think, brought to council and spoken on a few times. We're transitioning from our PROS, our records management system, to VersaTerm. And that's mostly to accommodate and speak more friendly with NG nine-eleven. Ongoing recruitment, we still have one vacancy, so we're working hard right now to fill that and get someone in training for January first, or the first class in January. Plus, we will have some officers through attrition that I would imagine for the next few years, we'll be looking, staying on the recruiting hard. Our officer staff health and wellness remains a priority, as is keeping current with training and equipment. And, and, well, technology is, it's advancing quite, quite rapidly, especially in AI. Training, I'll just touch on a little bit because like you can see, we just got the Taser sevens and the forty-millimeter less lethal as well as new firearms just previously. So training is, we gotta stay on top of it all the time. And that's it as far as the Wayburn Police are concerned.
Thanks, Chief. I would open it up to council. Any questions of the chief? Yeah, Counselor Bedore?
So your new recruit in two thousand twenty-six, is that an add or just a fill of a vacancy?
That's a fill of a vacancy. That's currently our open vacancy, our only vacancy spot that we have left at this time.
Yeah, Counselor Morissette?
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you, Chief, for keeping the officer staff health and wellness a focus. I know that policing is a very difficult position and we want to make sure that our staff and our members always stay safe and know that they're supported from a council position. So thank you very much for that.
I appreciate that, and that goes for all emergency services, yes.
I don't see any other questions, so thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
I'm sure you'll stay right till the end tonight.
The score is not five-two or three-one or four-three?
No idea, no idea. I'm just tormenting you. Just tormenting you. Thanks, Chief Vanasite.
So, Counsel, we will now have our deputy chief, Mike Woke, come to speak about the fire department.
Counsel, Your Worship, twenty twenty-five highlights. We've been able to replace several hoses and fittings that was allocated for last year. On the cancer prevention front, we purchased a new hose washer and NFPA compliant gear extractor and dryer for a year. Currently, ten-on-one training and certifications ongoing with eight of our recruits. And deputy chief and a career firefighter have been hired and retained for hopefully the long term. Twenty twenty-six initiatives, upgrade our wildland with new wildland truck. Some of that funding is a hundred and thirty-five thousand that was paid to us from the province. We'll utilize that towards this truck. I believe that's been set aside for that purpose. With that, we'll also upgrade our wildland gear. Put a down payment on ladder truck replacement. That truck takes forty-one months to build. By putting this down payment in place, it should lock in the price for that truck. And that last item, upgrade tooling and portable lighting on all our main responding trucks. We're running into some outdated equipment and misfit equipment between all our responding units.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
Yeah, don't sit down. In case there are questions, I suspect there will be some. Counselor Hanks?
So you mentioned the hundred, excuse me, the hundred and thirty-five thousand that was given from the province. Under what initiative was that given and what was the, is it earmarked particularly with one thing? Like, does it have to be a wildland truck?
Yeah, so this funding came from the five firefighters that went up north to assist with the wildland firefighting. So we've kind of earmarked this, this doors to go back into where it came from. So it'll just help us be better prepared for future wildland events.
Counselor Morissette?
Thank you, Your Worship. Deputy Chief, can you explain to those of us who may not be familiar with, what exactly is wildland gear and upgrading your wildland truck?
So wildland gear, currently, we're using Nomax coveralls, which is heavy, bulky, hot. Would like to replace with a two-piece wildland pants and jacket. And the wildland truck is specific unit, usually a one-ton type chassis with the pump. And it's a little bit more easy to get around terrain.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Jenke?
I have two questions for you, Chief. Just to paraphrase your answer for Counselor Morissette's question, the, the gear for fighting a house fire and fighting a wildland fire are completely different, is what you're saying?
Yep, yeah, so.
All right, and then with the ladder truck, you said you put a down payment on, is that to replace an existing vehicle?
Yep, that would replace our current ladder that we have, that's coming up on the twenty-year renewal process, so.
That was gonna be my third question, so thank you.
Yep.
Questions? If I may, just, just a little more conversation around the wildland truck itself. It's my understanding, and I'm not often right when it comes to equipment, that can also be used for uses beyond wildland firefighting, is that correct?
We could use that as a rapid response unit. If we've got two members at the hall, that can be the first truck out.
Right.
Just expedites anything that we're responding to.
So it's a multiple uses, it wouldn't just be left for wildland fires for sure, right? And secondly, yeah, the, putting the down payment down, I know on, on paper seems hard to swallow when it's gonna be four years before we get the truck. But the expectation, I think you've explained this to me, working with that company, we put that down payment down today. That will hold today's pricing, because I'm sure like everything else, fire trucks won't get any cheaper over the next four years. That is the reason for this down payment today.
Correct.
And we wouldn't be, no further payments, year two, year three, year four, than payments upon delivery of the truck.
Right.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, thanks so much, Deputy Chief. Any, anything else? Thank you so much. City Manager, who's up next?
Uh, next up is Richard Hanger, Director of Leisure Services. He'll talk about leisure and parks.
Thank you, Your Worship and Council. Twenty twenty-five highlights, we had our leisure center feasibility study and planning completed. Ready for council here very shortly. Ice plant and frontage at the hockey rinks have been upgraded. Permanent art collection has been appraised and updated for insurance reasons. And our turf maintenance and weed control programs were, have been kicked off and off to a good start. So in two thousand twenty-six, the initiatives are to continue strengthening our user group partnerships, primarily in the parks and leisure world. This is a lot of focus on soccer and baseball right now. We have good partnerships all across and we just want to continue strengthening those. The Young Fellows Park development, to focus on that in two thousand twenty-six. And continuation of our turf maintenance and weed control programs. It's important to keep up on that just so we don't get caught behind again. So in two thousand twenty-five, our budget was one point six seven four million. And in twenty-six, our budget has increased slightly, it's one point seven one nine million.
All right, so just with the focus on leisure and parks, thank you, by the way. Any questions on, on that? I, if I may, I have one. Earlier on, there was some conversation around some upgrades also that were required at Tom Lang Park or requested at Tom Lang Park. Those have been taken out, is that right, for the year?
Yes, there was some work done at Tom Lang Park this year. We had some, previously, we were talking about doing some further upgrades and some electrical and some foul ball control. There was some work done there and that'll get us by and not require.
We're comfortable with that work?
Yes, we're comfortable with the site there. All the lights are working, the, all the backstop foul balls that we have are in place. So I think we're comfortable facility-wise.
Very good. And then the two hundred thousand for Young Fellows Park, that's exciting. And, you know, kind of pretty sure we'll be able to get that work done this year?
Yes, after seeing some hiccups this year, we've got a lot of plans in place. Very confident we'll move forward successfully there, so the whole community will get the benefit from that.
Thank you very much for that, yeah. Oh, Counselor Hanks?
And just for clarity's sake, this particular budget doesn't include anything in any regards with the pool, correct?
Correct, the.
Okay, very good. Facilities, I suppose, is next then.
Yeah, and our facilities, highlights for two thousand twenty-five, as Chief Vanasite had mentioned, is the roof replacement of the police station and development of preventative maintenance and asset management software. So in two thousand twenty-six, we are continuing our roof maintenance program, which started, we had our assets surveyed here in twenty-four. So we've done some roof replacement work and a lot more maintenance this year. Doing that maintenance has given a bigger picture into, you know, all the current conditions. So we're trying to push out our replacement program by just increasing maintenance. Water tower repairs, they are carried over into two thousand twenty-six. There's some further investigation needed there, just with some further degradation to the roof. So that is still on the list and a big initiative we want to accomplish in twenty-six. And we want to continue to build out the preventative maintenance asset management software. This will further help us in our facilities assessment guides, because we'll have a full, we do all our maintenance through there, so then we'll be able to continue to see the trends on repairs and age of equipment. And then take that a step further and start to do future forecasting. So we have to build out that software and continue to focus on that for it to be of a good benefit. So our budget in two thousand twenty-five was four point one three eight million. Budget in two thousand twenty-six is three point eight.
Thank you. Questions on facilities? Counselor Bedore?
With the continued build-out of the PM and, PM asset management and software, does that, will that eventually get us to a point where we think, okay, we know the replacement of facility A, B, or C is going to be out here magically? Or is that more, more just the equipment and lifespan of equipment within those facilities?
The software that we're using is specifically the equipment within. So a lot of our large repairs that we see unexpected failures on is our HVAC and boiler equipment. And a lot of that is aging, so we have to just have a better understanding documentation-wise and control, like, start to understand how many of these heaters, when they're fifteen years old, start to fail. Or how much money do we start putting into them when they're ten, fifteen years old versus replacing it twenty years, so.
Other questions? One from me, just, I noticed the water tower repairs. Do you have a rough idea, I know it is a heritage property, do you have a rough idea what annually our spend is on that facility, if you kind of annualize that? I know some years are certainly higher than others. Not, not a fair question off the top of your head, I get that, but.
The annual budget for repairs and maintenance has been relatively low, like less than ten thousand dollars. Anything we go to do on the water tower, because it is, you know, it's a hundred and ten feet high, the tops that, of course, requires extensive work. But yeah, the, structurally, from what we have assessed, it seems good. There's just been some shakes fall off the roof and just gotta make sure that we have all that properly assessed and any rotten timbers changed out this, this time around.
Thank you. Any last questions for Director Hanning?
Nope, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
So Your Worship, I'm next up, so I'm doing plan and development. So some two thousand and twenty-five highlights is our progress on the offsite development levy study. We did develop fillable forms for building inspections. We continue to have our class three building inspections of the Waverne General Hospital. And then we did have it completed of the district official community plan. So some key initiatives for two thousand and twenty-six is one completion of the offsite development levy study. So we have been on hold with that project because of the unknown of what a new pool will cost. And that's one of the key factors. They've asked us for some dollar amounts. So we've been on hold because of that. We're looking at doing electronic submission for building inspections. And then going back to the Waverne General Hospital, we will have follow inspections of that property. I cannot tell you when that will be done, but we are quite happy to continue to have PBI do that work for us to continue to inspect that building. So for department costs, our actuals for two thousand and twenty-four were four hundred and sixty-nine thousand. For two thousand and twenty-five, budget was four hundred and fifty-three thousand. And the two thousand and twenty-six budget is three hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy. That reduction is actually because of the reduction in costs we're going to have for inspections of the hospital. As you get further down that project, there's still lots of inspections happening, but just what we had to put in the year before for inspections is a lot less that way.
Good. Thank you. Questions on planning and development? Hang on. Move on.
So next up, as we go through, it'll be our Director of Engineering, Renee Cognit. She'll have multiple departments she'll have to go through. So I'll just let her present her departments and then have questions, and then move on to the next one after that.
Thanks.
Thank you. So first up is the engineering budget. In twenty twenty-five, our highlight, oh, I guess we didn't have highlights. We applied for the Community Airport Partnership funding. Unfortunately, we were not successful with the funding, therefore we did not do any capital investment out at the airport. Twenty twenty-six initiatives, we are planning on doing a fog seal and crack seal to the main runway out at the airport, as well as asphalt repairs on our taxiways. This is, again, cap funding dependent. So twenty twenty-four, we had a budget of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred. And twenty twenty-five, we budgeted nine, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and ten. Twenty twenty-six, we have a budget of six hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy, with two hundred, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred, of that being our capital budget. And that capital is just the airport capital improvements over there, so.
Questions on that so far? Please continue.
Okay. Next up, we have Public Works budget. So in twenty twenty-five, we did a traffic signal light replacement at Fifth Street and First Avenue. This one is equipped with a camera system to automate and give the thoroughfare on First Avenue priority. And then we did the Highway Thirty-Nine culvert replacement partnership with Ministry of Highways. That was part of our urban highway connector program, asset management there. Twenty twenty-six initiatives, we will be continuing to pay for the Highway Thirty-Nine culvert carryover. That was a budget preapproval earlier this year. Then we have to replace our new bulk fuel tanks at the Public Works Yard so that those tanks hold all of our bulk fuel for our fleet internally. Then we are also replacing the new electric security gate for the Public Works Yard. And then we do have some plans for relining of some portions of the King Street storm sewer. So we have a capital budget this year of one point two million. That is significantly lower than the previous two years, around that three, three million.
All right. Counselor Morissette.
Thank you, Your Worship. Director Cognit, we've just done some really fantastic road work to King Street. Will this relining of the storm sewer have any adverse effects on that?
No, absolutely not. So this was, this was a part of our infrastructure assessments prior to paving, and it was more feasible, it was a really good candidate and more feasible to do the relining. So we decided to wait rather than have a really congested work area that, yeah, it's going to be minimal impact, so, yeah.
Thank you. Questions on this one? Yeah, Counselor Hanks?
So with the reduction in that particular budget, are you satisfied that the needs of the taxpayers are going to get done in regards to road repairs, maintenance, those types of things?
Yes. So this Public Works budget, I'm not talking about the IRP road, road replacement program. I will get to another slide. This is just everything other than basically our revitalization of our asphalt. So with the twenty twenty-six initiatives, you will see that I am not proposing another traffic signal light replacement in twenty twenty-six, and rather going to focus more on the, a little more of an increase in our asphalt, further down in the slides.
All right. I think that's good. Please continue.
Next, we have our fleet. In twenty twenty-five, we had the purchase of our new tandem truck and the cold planer skid steer attachment. In twenty twenty-six, we are looking at leasing a new landfill compactor. Our current, our existing landfill compactor's lease is up in about mid, mid-year of twenty twenty-six, so we will need to be replacing that. Then leasing a new hydrovac, the purchase of a one-ton truck with a flat deck, and the purchase of a fifteen-foot rear deck mower. So that gives us a proposed budget for twenty twenty-six of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. That's for the capital budget. In, I guess, yeah, our operating budget is one point four million. So there is a increase from twenty twenty-five. It was one point three, slight increase there, decrease from twenty-four.
Questions? Counselor Bedore.
So when we lease a piece of equipment, does that go into operational or is that capital?
So the lease is in operational and the purchase is in capital. So you'll see the leases will be under the one point four million. I believe that's correct, Laura?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then for the hydrovac, the one-ton and the rear deck mower, are those new adds or replacement of current equipment?
Those are all replace, sorry, the hydrovac is a replacement. So we will be looking to sell the older hydrovac. And then the rear deck motor, mower is a replacement. And then the one-ton truck with flat deck actually is a replacement, replacement and add-on for the flat deck portion of the crew truck, I guess. Yeah.
Any other questions, Counselor Morissette?
Thank you, Your Worship. Director Cognit, are there significant savings to leasing over purchasing? And are there advantages to leasing over purchasing tho, those pieces of equipment?
We believe that with the landfill compactor and hydrovac particularly, we'll, we'll see some benefits of leasing. They are heavily used equipment, like heavy equipment. They sustain, they go, they work hard, I guess, in short words. So the repairs to these equip, these pieces of equipment are quite hefty. Maintenance costs as well are quite large. So, yeah, we believe that leasing will be beneficial. Thank you. Yes.
Counselor Hanks?
Particularly on the hydrovac, this is a replacement of the second unit, correct? So we're going to move the first unit to the second spot and put a new unit in the first spot? Do you have any idea, this is probably an unfair question, but age of that particular unit, the second unit, how many hours are on it, those kinds of things, if it's?
Yeah. So this one's going, this hydrovac is going to replace a unit that's coming on twenty years old. And it's just, we looked into repairing it. It's not feasible to repair at this point. And a purchase of a new unit would be over like five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So the, the newer unit, the current new unit, was purchased in twenty twenty-one. We are looking at, for this type of equipment, about a ten to fifteen-year, year life expectancy on it. So this older unit has surpassed its, its lifespan, for sure, so.
Yeah, Counselor Jenke.
In terms of some of the vehicles that need to be replaced, what is the rationale behind focusing on new as opposed to used?
Do you mean as opposed to purchasing a used piece of equipment?
Yes.
I, I don't really think it's feasible to purchase used unless, like, we have a tendering process for that large of a capital purchase. So typically, we don't receive bids for, for used, used pieces of equipment, as well as just the industry is always moving with upgrades with a technical and, or like electronic and more innovative things. For example, our landfill compactor, now, the one that we're looking at, they're all equipped with a lot more newer GPS, yeah, that kind of thing. So, yeah, unless we can get a bid or look at maybe a one-to-two-year-old used piece of equipment, it wouldn't be feasible to look at really anything older than that. And then in that used market, when you're only looking at a one-to-two-year-old, it's very close to the cost of new. You're not really seeing a savings. So that's kind of why we just stick to the new.
Well, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Renee.
Yeah.
And I think if I could add to that, I, I think we've seen that in our own equipment. When, when we're done with, with a unit, it doesn't bring us a lot of value on the market. Is that fair to say? Like, I can't imagine this fifteen-inch rear deck mower, the one that we're replacing, is going to fetch us twenty grand on the open market or anything.
Yeah, no, unfortunately, we tend to use our equipment beyond a really good resale value.
Efficiently.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, no, our rear deck mower, unfortunately, is, is becoming hazardous. I, I wouldn't want to have it be used by anyone else, but, yeah. Our, our landfill, sorry, our hydrovac, old hydrovac, we're hoping we can still get a decent, a decent amount, so.
But you don't include any potential resale in any of these budget numbers because you just don't know what could be there?
That may be a question for Laura.
Because they went out and got tender on a few things.
Okay.
Or got prices.
So that is offsetting the, the cost. Yeah. So we are estimating, just a rough estimate of what we think we might get. So that is also included, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go on to, sorry, it's, the IRP.
Okay.
Exciting one, right?
Yeah. Okay. So infrastructure revitalization program. So this budget encompasses our, our investment on our asphalt revitalization. So in twenty twenty-five, we paved Fifth Avenue North from King Street to Fifth Street. And then we paved King Street from First Avenue to Fifth Avenue, so a nice little L shape over there. King Street was paved in conjunction with UHCP funding. Well, it wouldn't have been possible without UHCP funding, I guess I should say. Twenty twenty-six initiatives, we are planning on paving, this paving program won't be as, it won't be a full rebuild. Therefore, we are hoping to get longer lengths. So Second Street from First Avenue to Prairie Avenue, Third Street from Cotto Ave to Prairie Ave, and then Railway Avenue from Government to Fifth. Then we have also applied for UHCP funding for the government road, that portion from Cotto Avenue to Highway Thirty-Nine. Since we did just do the resurfacing of the government road bridge, that works scope will, will be most likely just at Railway, Railway Avenue. If we don't receive UHCP funding, then, then we will not be doing any capital investment on Government Road. That, that is funding dependent. So, yeah, twenty twenty-four, we had a budget of three hundred and fifty-two thousand. Twenty twenty-five, we budgeted seven hundred thousand. As you can see, twenty twenty-six, we did increase that to just over one million. So, yep.
All right. Questions on, on, on the IRP? Counselor Bedore.
So you said, no, not a full rebuild. So we've done our core samples of these roads already, and we know, because I, like, I, I always explain to the public, when we redo these roads, we want to do them for a long time. And I just want to make sure we're, we're not skimping, just for.
Yeah, no. So we're definitely not skimping. We've done road assessments over the last four years. We have lots of data, as well as lots of data from when we did our rebuilds on Fifth Street, First Avenue, King Street. So we're pretty confident of what we're dealing with for our, our base structure in the city and as well as previous layers, I guess, multiple layers of, or overlays of asphalt. So we know what kind of asphalt structure we have there as well. And then doing it this way, we are able to, we are able to get another ten years of life expectancy over a larger length of roadway, like Second Street, Third Street, Railway Ave, rather than focus on maybe half of that and do a full rebuild for maybe only a twelve, it probably won't even, you know, be pretty difficult even to get a fifteen-year life expectancy. So it's, it is definitely feasible.
And then one more question around the UHCP. I think when we first looked at this at council, it was Government Road right to Ninth Avenue. And then did we scale back to Thirty-Nine? Is that?
Yes. So our UHCP funding project, our next priority, is Government Road from Cotto Ave all the way to Tenth Avenue South. Just because of the, the distance or the, the work area and scope and, and price, we did split that into two phases, as well as for that large of a project, it would be quite difficult to get it done within one budget year, one construction year. So in order to upper odds to get funding, as well as to actually have it completed, because with our funding comes a very hard deadline, completion, completion date, and you can't, you can't apply for a multi-year project. So we did split it in half. So our next priority after, after applying for funding for this phase one would be our phase two, Government Road from Highway Thirty-Nine South to Tenth Ave. Yeah.
Anybody else, questions on this, on the IRP? Director Cognit, can you, can you, tell me what the work will be done on Fourth Street this year? I noticed a little moving around in your budget of some items, so if you could, just a little more clarity on that.
For Fourth Street paving?
Yeah.
Okay. So Fourth Street, we did a water main replacement. And then we did pave the, the water main trench there. And then we ended up doing the intersection at Fourth and Cotto as a rebuild, I guess, localized repair area there. So if budget allows in our, in our Public Works budget, we would consider or plan to do a, a mill of the other half of Fourth Street and match that new pavement. Yes. Yeah, from north of Cotto, yeah. Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry, I've shut down. You'll have to, there we go. Utilities.
Okay. In our utilities, for twenty twenty-five highlights, we have the lift station upgrades, which actually includes the upgrades to our pump transfer station and our inlets at the Equalization Lagoon. We did some stormwater sanitary system modeling with some data that we collected in twenty twenty-four. And water main replacements happened on Fourth Street as well as Suris Avenue. Suris Avenue wasn't originally planned, but due to some multiple breaks and unrepairable breaks, we just had to pivot. we just had to pivot a little bit and switch out Suris Ave for Highfield Crescent, which leads me into 2026 initiatives. Our water main replacements will be Cotto Avenue and Highfield Crescent, as well as Lift Station 6 upgrades. So at the Lift Station 6, the upgrades are going to include replacing all the piping and pump infrastructure to stainless steel for safety reasons, as well as they are just deteriorated and not functioning very well. So in 2024, our budget was 3.1 million. 2025, we budgeted 3.2 million. In 2026, our budget will increase to 4 million, with 800,000 of that in our capital, in our capital budget for those capital projects.
Thank you very much. Councilor Morissette.
Your worship, Director Cognit. Where is Lift Station 6 and what area of the city does it kind of service?
So Lift Station 6 is behind, south of Tim Hortons. Sorry, I can't remember that street. That street that heads to Microtel. It's at the very end of the street. The average person probably wouldn't know it's there. It is a large manhole. There's no actual structure, building structure on top of it, besides just an electrical panel there. And it services that whole commercial area. So all the restaurants and hotels in that area, south of Highway 39 and up until, or to McDonald's.
Perfect, thank you. It's just nice to know where our investment is going.
Absolutely.
Councilor Bedore.
And from past experience, lift stations, you don't want to know where they are because they're doing their job. You don't want to know anything about them.
I had intended this question for Dr. Cognit, but if Councilor Bedore wants to answer it, that's fine, too. Someone asked me recently what a lift station is. And of course, I answered, but I thought, that might be a question more people have. So can you tell us what they actually are?
I'd love to.
This is a true story. I'm not making this up. I got this question, and I thought it's probably out there.
Yeah, no, it definitely is. So the lift station is, it is a wet well where the sanitary mains, sanitary sewer, when you flush your toilet, drain your sink, bathtub that, where all of that liquid and sanitary waste flows into a wet well. So some lift stations are a large wet well and dry well situation, so like a chamber underground. Some lift stations are more of a manhole, you know, vertical culvert. Those are the smaller ones. And from that lift station, there are pumps to get it into a higher elevation over to the main lift station. Our main lift station is located by the museum off of Highway 39. So all of, we have six lift stations. So five of them are all collecting in a localized area. And then they are pumping from that collection point to the main lift station, Lift Station 1 by the museum. And from that main lift station, it's a nice big red brick building, it, from there, the entire city, all of the areas that are coming together into one nice big pool of sanitary liquid gets pumped out to the lagoons and to the treatment cells from there, so.
That is a much better answer than I gave when it was put to me, so thank you.
I tried keeping it as little a detail as possible, but you know what? I just thought you guys were...
I only know this because I Googled it, but the street you were trying to name is Grace Street.
Yes, that is it. Thank you.
Any other water movement questions? All right, thank you. You're still up, water treatment.
Oh, I still have more, okay.
More water.
Water treatment, oh, this is a good one. Nice, clean, fresh water. So on 2025 highlights, we continued our repairs at Albert Douglas Dam as per 2022 inspection. So those repairs that are taking place this week, actually, include the replacement of our stop logs out there. So we're replacing our old timber and concrete stop logs that were not sealing, not functioning, and a high risk to failure with nice, brand-new steel stop logs, lifting, hoist, and winch system, new electrical out there. We'll have a little more security out there with surveillance, some lighting. So very good upgrades there. Then we also did some ammonia modifications at the water treatment plant. So that's an extension of our process improvement upgrades that we did in 2022 and '23. This is just to get more automated monitoring and sampling to meet our regulatory requirements for our permit to operate. In 2026, our initiatives will be the replacement of the filter media, sand, and anthracite in Plant 100. So that's the media in our clarifier. Basically, you can think of, you know, sand and little rocks that the water and solids will filter down through. And over time, that media gets coated with sludge. And once it all gets coated, every little rock is coated and it kind of clogs it up. So you can't just clean it like your fish tank. Fortunately, you've got to remove all of it and replace with brand-new media layers. So that's the project for 2026. 2024 budget was just over 2.2 million. 2025 was 2.7 million. And our 2026 budget is 2.3 million, with 600,000 of that being the capital budget for that filter media replacement.
Thank you. Questions on water treatment? Councilor Higgs.
Fair to say that on the water treatment piece, majority of this is to keep us up to standard, correct?
Yes, absolutely. So this is all just to keep up to, to meet our regulatory requirements that are set out from Water Security Agency on our permit to operate. So our requirements for reporting, for sampling, for meeting those sample requirements, and any capital investment that helps us get there without a boil water advisory is worth it, yeah.
Thanks. Nothing more, landfill.
All right, so last but not least, for mine anyways. Landfill in 2025, we did no capital investment for highlight, but 2026, we are planning the construction of the engineered filling cell and the leveling of the scale shack. So we did plan the construction of the engineered filling cell in 2025. Unfortunately, it went out to tender and came back significantly over budget. So we did postpone it for another year. So in 2026, we will be looking at a capital budget of three point, just over $3.2 million. It's significantly higher than previous years. 2024, we had 1.5 million budgeted. 2025, similar, 1.5 million. And 2026 budget's now going to be 1.6 million with 3 million capital for that capital project.
Questions, Councilor Corrigan?
Thank you, Your Worship. First of all, thank you, Director Cognit. Could you explain what an engineered filling cell is? And the cost of this is 3.2 million dollars. Certainly, I could think of a lot better things to spend 3.2 million dollars on, which I think you all can, but could you tell us why we have to do this?
Yes, so this is a result of meeting our regulatory requirements. So we get our permit to operate for our landfill through the Ministry of Environment. And through our permit requirements, we are required to do a leachate management plan, a phased filling plan, environmental monitoring. It's quite an extensive list of requirements that we're mandated to do. And this engineered filling cell is going to allow us to meet those requirements. It will have a liner and a leachate collection whole system where we can be sure that the leachate isn't percolating through the years of waste and contaminating potential groundwater or Suris River, for example, or any drinking water wells nearby. And then for the filling cell, we are able to have a better reporting, record tracking, keeping of our life expectancy, which is also a liability for the city that we have to continually report on, as well as a phased decommissioning plan. Again, it's a, that is a permit requirement, as well as a liability. So the phased filling cell is just one filling cell, but it is a plan for nine, there will be nine phases of this. You can kind of think of stacking Jenga blocks, but not like straight up, more of a pyramid shape, to really maximize our airspace out there. It will extend the life expectancy and just prolong having to start a brand-new landfill. With starting a brand-new landfill, we're looking at meeting all of these requirements and just plus the added capital cost, that initial capital cost, to start fresh from new. So this really is our most feasible option to meet those requirements and keep up to date with all the environmental initiatives as well, so, yeah.
Thank you. And these are situations that we really have no choice in doing. We have to because we're mandated through the regulatory bodies, correct?
Yeah, so Ministry of Environment is our regulator for the landfill. So we work very closely with them, as we did last year, well, the last two years. You know, they are very reasonable to work with, as long as we showed them a plan. But, I mean, when it comes to budget allocations, they know it's, you know, it can't just be done like, you know. So, yeah.
Right, yeah. But these are very large budgetary items that we're required to do. I mean, not only for the landfill, but water treatment plant and other things that people really don't see, but the tax dollars have to go towards in order to keep these facilities up and running.
Yeah. Tax dollars and user fees.
Yes, thank you very much.
Keeping in mind that there's a baseball game on, leachate.
Yes.
So what hap, where does it go? I mean, if it's going to run to the bottom of the bag, then where do they haul the water to?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So our design actually is an evaporation pond. So it will go into a lined pond. And just with our high evaporation rates in this region and the size of the pond, it will evaporate. And then every now and then, they'll just have to do a quick scrape of the pond from the sludge or whatever. But, yeah, that's where it's going to go. Not a swimming pool, though.
Okay, any further questions on the landfill? Or anything that we've seen so far, right back to the start? No? So I think we'll go back to the Director of Finance to just wrap up, I guess, on, you know, what for us is Slide 28 and 29, and see how this is going to play out for us.
Okay, what everyone wants to know is how our tax is going to be increased and how will it be collected. So the mill rate will increase for general operations by 500,000. And the base tax will increase for the emergency services and snow removal by 273,000, and that will result in a $65 increase in base tax. So the impact on a home that's assessed at 300,000 will be approximately $140 per year. So it's $11.67 per month. That's keeping the provincial education tax the same. So 75 of that will be on your mill rate, and 65 will be on your base tax. So we have an open house scheduled for Tuesday, November 4th, from 11:00 to 1:00 at City Hall. And Thursday, November 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Credit Union Spark Center for everyone to come and share their feedback, find out more information.
Would encourage folks to come to that. I know we've done a couple of them every year for the last few years. Last time, I think, was two evenings. Today, it's a sort of a lunch, this year, sorry, a sort of a lunch hour, 11:00 to 1:00, and then an evening a couple of days later. But encourage folks to come out, ask your questions, and find out. The directors are all there as well. So oftentimes, as counselors, we have to lean even on the directors for the details. But I have found that the directors have been able to answer every question that's been posed, except for maybe one over the last number of years. So at the end of the day, it's, as it looks today, $11 a month for the average house, if the education tax doesn't change.
Correct.
Okay, anybody got last parting thoughts on this or questions? That was riveting. Yeah, City Manager, do you have questions?
No, I have one thing, Your Worship. So if people want to see this information, learn more about the open house. See the budget presentation itself. We actually put this on our city website.
Yeah, right.
So it's on our www.waivern.ca/budget. So we have this budget information. We also have past budget information. So if people want to see that information, that is included there. Again, what you just said, Your Worship, we do encourage the public to come out to these open houses. Please reach out to your counselors if you have any questions. I can also reach out to any department heads if you have any questions, or myself as City Manager. We want to be here as civic employees and make sure that we provide information to our taxpayers.
Thanks for that. And also, I just want to extend a thank you to the department heads and all of the staff who put this budget together. This is a big deal, and I know that, you know, everybody appreciates the hard work that you do at this and to try to, you know, be as efficient as we can. So I do appreciate that. I want to express that. All right, look, that's it. Let's move on. Item number 11 is inquiries and announcements. Anybody? Councilor Morissette?
I'll let Councilor Bedore go first.
I think we might be talking about the same thing. But a big congratulations to the committee and executive that pulled together the Commune-thon this weekend. It's probably the most hours I've spent at the Legion, but it was a really good time. I think it was a brand-new venture for this group and kind of re-vented the bringing back home. And they blew it out of the water by 101,000 bucks, going back to our community. So big kudos to that group there. And once I recovered from that, I went over to Pumpkin Lane, which apparently we had like 1,500, 1,700 kids walk through that park. It was a really nice night and got to sit at the City of Waverne table and not eat candy because I had no time. I had to hand it all out.
Good. Good work. Councilor Morissette.
Thank you. He, Councilor Bedore, you did beat me to it. Mother Nature and I do have an accord for every time this year because of Commune-thon and Pumpkin Lane. So she's allowed to start getting cranky about the 1st of December. Yeah, so thank you. I was the volunteer chair, so thank you to everybody who reached out and helped out with Commune-thon, making it a success this year. And they're still taking donations anytime. So again, thank you to the community. Also, the library book sale is going to be from November 13th to the 15th. You can start dropping your donations off at the library beginning November 1st. That's good used books, novels, no encyclopedias, no textbooks, please and thank you because they do... DVDs, maybe no VHS. And for those of you who were born before 1990, we know what VHS is. Anybody after that, come talk to me afterwards. But yes, we're accepting all sorts of donations at the library. And if you would like to volunteer at the book sale, you can contact the library and they will put you down for a time.
Excellent. Councilor Jenke?
I was also going to give a big congratulations to everyone involved in the Commune-thon. It was a huge undertaking this year. This is the first year we've done it completely on our own without input from national organizations or other communities. So that's a big win. And also, I see that the police chief has left, but I was going to see if he could investigate whether or not Nick Corlott got his pie.
That is a good question. We'll put it forth. Anybody else? Yeah, Commune-thon was incredible. I would just also like to pat City Council on the back for our astounding performance at Jeopardy at 5:30 Saturday morning. It was phenomenal how well we did. Really, really was, yeah. Okay, I think that's it. No notice of motion. So we will adjourn this meeting and see everybody back here on Monday, November 10th. Thank you very much.